Yes, we're ready to roll.
All right, calling to order, Joe Becker.
President.
Andy Bertram here. Peter Busenbach.
Here.
Dan Kader.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Dean.
Here.
Russ Roloff.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
Thank you, Andy. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Sorry, I didn't ask if there was any conversation. Tough luck. Motion to approve the minutes of the April 26, 2017 regular board meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I have a motion to approve the bills payable in a second?
Make the motion to pay the bills?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We move immediately to good news.
It's really good news and for those people that are watching on Hastings Cable Community Television, as a board and a community, we're very fortunate to have, I want to say roughly 20 individuals who gave of their time and dedication and commitment to a facility review process. And there were three board members that were on that process as well and administrators. And we have some of those individuals here this night or tonight. And it's really, really good dialogue, a lot of conversation about what do we need to look at reinvesting in our facilities and what does our community need? And I was glad to be a part of that process, both as a person who listened and resource for that. And now for the rest of the board members, we've been keeping you in the loop as we went during our work sessions, but really tonight's the time for the committee to report back to you as a board and to the community on what they believe should be the next steps for the Hastings School District and our community as far as it goes to facilities and reinvesting. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to them and let them present on the process and the findings and share with you. And then at the end of their presentation or right during the middle, however they want to do it, we can go through some questions and ask some follow-ups. So with that, I'll ask the committee members who are going to present to come on up and share with us. Well, I think for television purposes, probably off here to the side a little bit.
And how is the slideshow view? Who's got that?
Deanna has that.
You guys can just click it on. There's a mouse right there in that drawer. Just pull the drawer open. Thank you. Well, thank you guys for having us here today. We are representing, as you said, the whole task force together. You know, all of us three are representing the whole group. So we'll just introduce ourselves real quick before we get started. I'm Michelle Chompsland.
I'm Paul Dodson.
And I'm Sonia Kirk Jacobson.
So... The task force actually is a group of, it was 20 people. We met every other week between January and April for two to three hours a meeting. Part of that process is we always met at a different site and had a tour. All the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school, Todd Field. So we started with a tour that was optional for the first half an hour. Then we had different presentations during our meeting. The presentations we covered were safety and security, the different funding sources, how the school district gets their money, some of the needs that we are seeing in the district, both for students and for facilities, the capacity of our current buildings, what we currently have in place for bonds and what's expiring. So we were educated on what was happening, has already happened. We got to see both on the tours and with our reports, the deferred maintenance. And then got a tour of Todd Field to see the current state of that and talk a little bit about the future of that.
So we spent some time talking about what we thought were the needs and the wants of the district. And that guided much of our sort of tough decision-making. What are the needs versus what are the wants? You'll see later what we presented as the absolute minimum was our needs and we threw out a lot of wants. And that was not easy. But we thought we would come up with something that was sellable to the community, especially given the constraints of another levy coming up in two years and not wanting to overreach into this year's ask. So you can see what the needs were that we thought, especially the fact that the bond in 2009 covered about half of what was identified as the actual needs of the district. We thought that that was important to address the rest of that and not leave that out. We thought that reinvesting in the community assets was important because at some point we all understand that if you let an asset depreciate to a certain point, you end up spending more money to bring it back up to a serviceable condition than if you would have just kept it maintained all along. We also spent a lot of time talking about community shared spaces and how if we're going to invest in those spaces, how are we going to do that to get the best return on our investment, not just as a school district, but as a community? So those were some of the things that we had in mind.
And we developed kind of a consensus on priorities based on taking in lots of information. Most of us are not familiar with how all of the many pieces in the district work and how everything relies on different funding and different groups using it. And so we took in a lot of information and then we met together and broke into small groups to come up with what we all thought was important, kind of shared ideas, shared priorities. And we worked together on a lot of the decisions that we shared a lot of ideas in and came to a lot of understanding about where everybody was coming from.
I don't know if you guys want us to read this. This was our final consensus after all our small groups of what our priorities were. And we'll have a breakdown of these, but we have school safety, unfinished mechanical improvements from the middle school, additional deferred maintenance items that were addressed in parallel with high priority needs, so we'll get into that a little bit later. Preparing the high school for aging 20 years, 21st century learning spaces, reinvestment in community spaces and technology. So as a group, we decided these were the priorities for our recommendations. So starting with security, we got suggestions from school leaders and experience from World Architects as well and different things and what other schools have done for security. There were lots of different upgrade options that we could look at and consider. What we did is we took every single possible suggestion of security options and we, as a group, decided to pick the ones that we felt would have the biggest impact on the most students and also be the most cost-effective. So there were some things that were eliminated from the list because we felt like it maybe wasn't necessary, but some other schools maybe do it. And so we felt, feel that, you know, the safety and security portion of the referendum would easily be supported by taxpayers as well because most people do not have a problem with that and they put that as a high priority. So we thought that this was an easy sell to the community. Any questions on any of these areas?
Okay, for those of you, I'm sorry, excuse me. Tim, has everybody on the board read the big binder of all the 2009 deferred maintenance items? So if I refer to that, everybody knows?
I think they have a good understanding of what our ongoing needs items are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as a committee, we were presented by World Architects with a huge list of all of the projects that had been identified in 2009 as maintenance items in the district. Back in 2009, a priority listing was established. Those numbers haven't been changed at all, but we did see, and this is what I referred to earlier, of these items, only about half of the items were addressed that were identified at that time. And that was eight years ago. So what we decided was, after having looked at the priority one and two items, especially with respect to the middle school and the HVAC issues there and the other issues, that all of the one and two items should be addressed by this bond. The selected priority three, four, and N items were other items that were obviously lower on the list, but we looked through those and sort of handpicked those and said, okay, of the things that other people decided were less important or a lower priority, we think that at this point in time, these actually should be moved up and dealt with as opposed to a can that's kicked down the road again for the next people who do this.
And there are also some items in there that maybe weren't a high priority, but like the HVAC system, as long as you're doing that, we're going to replace the tiles in the ceiling. Because it made economical sense to do some of them. So some of the things that got put in there is because if you're doing this, let's do this too. Because it did make sense to tear it down and re-put back up the old thing. So those will be a few of the items and those are all itemized for you guys in there, too.
That was, some of those things that we arrived at, we arrived at because of the help of the district members who were at these meetings with us. Various people from various parts of the district said, well, if you're going to do that, then you know, there's this over here.
Right. They're very helpful in kind of going through. We were very needy. We'd go to a meeting and we'd say, oh, now next week, we want to know this, this, and this, and this. And they'd come back to us with answers and breaking down numbers and prioritizing and everything. And so that's where, so we could narrow down this number to be more sufficient instead of having things in there that we didn't really need. And so they're very good at bringing us what we needed, so.
Bringing our schools into more of a 21st century learning style, which is definitely a trend that is happening in education. Most of the requests for the public school grants are based, are focused on flexible learning spaces and making the space that is there an easy place for all kids to learn in. And, excuse me, and we also talked, that was one of our focuses, and we also talked about including maker spaces into our learning, into the school designs. Where the high school entrance, the high school pod entrances are, the areas of the middle school, our examples of flexible learning spaces are kind of open and it's not designated as a classroom space. So you could use those spaces really easily to change that into more of a maker space or a flexible learning space. The foundation has kind of met together and decided that with the grants that they have, they're not able to accommodate the flexible learning requests and things like that that so many of the teachers have. And so that's why we wanted to make sure that we included that in the budget that we present because if the teachers are seeing such a high need for those kind of changes in their own classrooms and in their own schools, then it's definitely something that needs to be addressed.
I think when this was first proposed to us, it was a very high number and we realized it was more building, like bricks and mortar type, let's add on maker space onto the schools. And we didn't see that as something that we wanted to spend our money on. And so what we did instead is we came up with this solution, which basically we're allowing each school the flexibility to not build anything, but if the teachers want to get the adjustable seats or desks and different things like that, each school can decide how they want to spend the money to create the flexible learning space. And so nothing, we're not proposing that anything be built, make new maker spaces or new flexible learning centers, but kind of use the funds to get the things that everyone's requesting, you know, from the grants and stuff, to create their own. So each school would have that, basically they'd have their own little foundation, they could maybe take, however they want to do it. But this was one idea that we came up with, a way to kind of spread it out throughout all those schools. Are there any questions on this or what this process is or what this needs? It's a little newer concept.
You alluded, Michelle, to there was a bigger number and maybe a question around adding on to buildings in order to address this. Was it, was it a difficult decision within your committee to say, you know, that might be further than we can go or did it, was it more uniform? How did you guys kind of come to a conclusion on that?
Actually, it was a easy, I think nobody wanted to spend that at first and everyone's like, well, we didn't see that as a needed priority because of, you know, with the budgets restraints, we wanted to be as reasonable as possible. And then one of the members came up with this idea, why not do this instead? And what we liked about it is although a bond is focused on building and like non-glamorous things, and this is a way to kind of bring in people, hey, it's also learning. So in a way, we're getting the learning into it. So when people are supporting it, it's like, yep, you have your safety and security, you have your maintenance, we also have things to help with the learning, even though it's physical items, that will help enhance the learning of our students. So that might help also gain support for, from our voters because it's enhancing in that way, too. So that was a suggestion one of the members had and we're like, yeah, that's a great idea. Do it that way. I think we were in the elementary school at the time at McCallup and he's like, if I could have every one of my classrooms like this, I would. And then that's when the suggestion came up and kind of, so we totally focused change from originally just looking at buildings. Anything else you guys want to?
I think, I think part of it too was we looked at the spaces, the actual bricks and mortar, and there really aren't any to speak of in the district now. And jumping into that with both feet as opposed to giving people the money to say, maybe you want to buy furniture for the young Tim Collins who can't sit still during class. So he's got a chair to sit in that he can spin a bike wheeler, whatever, and start the process that way and allow it to be a little bit more organic from the point of view of the staff as opposed to just imposing, you will put this room on your building now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh.
Yeah.
It's a great idea and I just, I like the 1.6 million. Will the administrators have time to get together and talk about their own building and say, well, maybe you should have more than me because like the high school is fairly new, they do have the commons spaces. Are they going to have a chance to have some dialogue and kind of talk more about that?
I don't know how the bonds were, kind of asked that question, you know, is it set in stone that you say this is that or can we put 1.6 million percent, you know, learning and then the high school maybe proposes how much they need the middle school and then if we have more leftover for elementary school? I don't know how that's religious.
Yeah, definitely. I think that when you go out to the community and you outline what you're going to spend it on, you want to stay within reason of that. But to your point, and Mike Johnson is here tonight as high school principal, he may agree with what you said and say to Mark Zuzik, you know what, we've got the pod areas, we've got the common areas, and I think maybe 100,000 mine could go to middle school so that those students have more of a flexible learning day. So there's still some room within that.
We came up with the numbers kind of more like there's more students at those, more classrooms, and if you want to have more classrooms, that needed, you know, different types of seating and stuff. But yeah, if there's flexibility, we're not set on this is what it has to be per school. That's true.
I got one more.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to think of how to phrase it, but have there been any, what kind of information is out there that shows that the flexible learning environments have had a positive impact on maybe the results, the grades and the overall learning of the students?
There's a ton out there.
Is there?
And I was looking even before when we were making this presentation because there's maker spaces, which more of the creativity thing. And then there's flexible learning space, which is how they sit and learn. And they're talking about how you walk into one classroom and you have one laying on their belly and reading and you have someone standing and you interview those kids and say, why are you doing this? And they pick what's most comfortable for them in their learning style. And, what's the, I have a principal at McCallup, yeah. Well, they were saying that even when you have a classroom that's like that, how much more they're paying attention and everything. But there's tons of research out there that when we get to the marketing of this, that you could throw out those statistics to the public in one's benefit. And the teachers are obviously seamless, that's why they're all requesting it for the grants, because they want their classroom to be that way. And they wouldn't be doing that just because it's a trend, they're seeing a difference in how the students are reacting to them and their, because everyone has different learning styles. I know my husband just got one of those desks that you can stand up or sit down on, you know, and he stands almost all day. And, you know, everyone has different ways of what they're learning. And we saw some in Kennedy where they'll have some higher desks and you have some group ones. And so I think there is a lot of research out there. So I think it would be easy for us to sell that to the public from the research and how well they behave and pay attention and all that.
Well, and from experience I've seen in Angie Erickson, she's got a little bit of a different environment there. I see it as positive, too.
Right, yeah. But there is research that we would be able to pull to sell it to the public, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next we move on to the community shared spaces, which mostly end up being athletic spaces. And again, the reason we came up with these priorities and these numbers was a twofold The most significant priority was safety again, and I'll get into that in a second. And then the second was return on investment. Specifically at the high school, replacing the track, we saw that there are places in the track where if you put your foot in the wrong place when you're running as fast as you possibly can, it could be a safety issue. The needs at the middle school were the same with gym floors and the problem with the track there is buckling up. It's the rubber surface is delaminating from the vituinous surface. And the same thing at McNamara Stadium. Some of the other people on the committee and I were talking because we played on that field 30 years ago and it wasn't pretty then, but at this point now, just by walking on it, you can see that it's a safety issue. And our kids who are playing on it are hearing from kids who come from other schools and say, man, we love playing in that stadium, in that place in your town, but we tape our ankles extra when we come to play football there because we know that we're going to have guys rolling their ankles on your grass. So we looked at, well, with respect to Todd Field or McNamara Stadium, what do we do about that? And the cheaper solution would have been to build a field like you have at the high school that's grass on top of sand and peat. But of course, that was half the cost of doing an artificial turf field or a little bit more and doesn't give you any more usage. At this point, what is it, Todd Field gets used about 40 times a year. And if you put a sand peat field in, it again, gets used about 40 times a year. Whereas if you put in a turf field, the use almost triples. So that is all of your kids in the district get to use it more and as a district, you get to share it with the community, which would be revenue. And of course, you know, it's a town legacy. So to allow it to fall into disrepair would be a mistake for lots of reasons. So the numbers we arrived at there were, well, if we're going to do something, there's no point in doing a half measure and then saying to the community, well, we took this much money out of your pocket and now you don't really get much more. If we're going to ask you to contribute, we want to give you something back. So that's why we went with the artificial turf. And then of course, if you put the artificial turf in and the usage increases and you don't do anything to the infrastructure around it, you've got that whole, sorry, you've got that whole problem as well. Parking lot that people don't want to park in because it's flooded, restrooms in the concession stand that no one wants to go in because everybody knows why.
Do you want me to share the statistics?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So currently, trend says that about 40 days a year, it gets used and only once a day. So you can't use it for a JV game at varsity. That will increase to 110 days, not including twice in the day. So it would be 120 actual days, but you could have actually more games on there. So right now, it's only being used for varsity, soccer, lacrosse and football. So no JV players or anything get to play on it. So if you have an earlier game and a later game, you'll be able to do that once we get to official turf, artificial turf. So this is just for the school district use, going from 40 to 110 days, also for practices and other things like that. Also, right now, the community gets to use it zero days and that will increase to 120, not including multiple use days. And so in the summer, that allows us to host lacrosse tournaments, soccer tournaments and everything from these other local communities that we rented out. They could have multiple games in one day, have that great stadium, also bring revenue into the community with the restaurants and things like that, too. But right now, because of the maintenance, they're not allowed to do that. So it's 120 days more usage that the community would also, they'll use it and turn into potential revenue as well. I'm sorry, I just wanted to be for you.
No, that's fine. I think that for those of us who are in the room for those many days and evenings, we spent a lot of time talking about this near the end. And without a doubt, there was consensus to moving, you know, for this. And I think that you answered a lot of questions that I was hoping you to talk about all the positives. And I think that that's what brought the group to consensus are the six to seven bullet point items. And so again, I just wanted, because we're being televised, we did spend a lot of time discussing this specifically as we had to fine tune. And again, tonight you did a really good job of giving a clear picture to the community of why this does need to be on the list. So thank you.
And I think because we know that as the community starts for athletics, it was probably our biggest, where we were the most different in it when we first were starting. And so that's what was nice by the end, I think almost everyone in the committee, once we got all the stats and everything, agreed that this was the smartest way to spend our money and our investment of that.
And as you say, as you go for a bond, this is a very visible, this is one example of something that is very visible throughout the community. And for those that are here, you know, coming through town on Highway 61, coming through town on Highway 55, you can't miss it.
Right. And just so you know, we had a huge list of things and a lot of things like upgrading scoreboards and technology, storage facilities, updating softball and baseball facilities, all of those things we chose not to do because we wanted to be responsible for the money. We came up with these things, but there's a lot of, one of the things we talked about is possible solutions for that is maybe looking for community sponsors in the future that may be, you know, sports, you know, sports athletes or families or whatever may want to sponsor a new scoreboard or put up new storage facilities and things like that. Because we knew we wanted to be responsible with everyone's money or like, well, what are our priorities? We could have asked for lots of stuff and we could go way over zero tax increase. So we did make a lot of those decisions, too. You know, so it's not like this was, do we do this or not? It's, well, what else are we going to cut out if we're going to do this? So we did spend a lot of time really looking at those numbers and trying to be responsible with our recommendations. And some of the things, just an example of the middle school, too, is like the old bleachers and the partitions that's on there in the locker rooms. We found out how it worked, what the locker rooms were, and making those, actually redoing those. And so that's part of that middle school number as well. Any other questions about this area?
Are there other slides as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, we still have a few.
Yeah.
Okay, just.
Okay.
So this one, we, we knew that this doesn't put a real dent in what the district needs, obviously, to reinvest in technology. But there were a couple of reasons we didn't spend more money. One of which was, Tim suggested to us that as a district, we don't want to reinvest in technology wholesale every so often. We would rather do some of it and then a couple of years later, some more and some more because that allows for a phased approach to fixing things and you don't get into problems with wholesale fixes. And we also thought that it might be the case that the district would have, through a new funding mechanism, a little bit more money in its annual budgets to be able to address this as well. So while we obviously wanted to do something to address, as we all know, rapid obsolescence of technology, we didn't want to overspend there.
The cool thing is for voters, this is The cool thing is for voters, this is another button that you can say, hey, with this bond, we're in, we invest in, in technology. And so I think that's something that the community likes to hear too, that part of what their money's going for is thinking, what are the different, you know, items we can give them for. Or, you know, reasons for them to come to the polls. So this is a summary of everything here. And it's slightly over the zero tax increase, um, which is forty-two million, which that, with that bond expiring. And, um, but we feel with the wide array of things we're hitting there, from technology to learning to deferred maintenance, all those things that are. Hopefully the taxpayers would be willing to support it because it's gonna be a slight increase in taxes, but it's not an outrageous amount. So we tried to be, and that number came down because we got some benedict already and already we're able to save on locker rooms, so.
Um, I think communication is the biggest challenge that we're gonna face to get this bond passed. Everybody has different channels where they learn information about what's going on in the district. Not only communicating the needs that we have, but also helping the community understand that the, um. The expiring high school bond that's there will be, um, if that expires and we just continue it on, that's a zero increase in taxes. But with what we have suggested, it will be just a minimal tax increase. Because this is not a regular voting year, most of the voters that do show up feel strongly about the issue. They feel that they are, um, that it's important to them and that they're a part of that decision and we need to make sure. To get the strong supporters out there to vote and to involve, um, people from all over the community in, um. Understanding why we came up with these, um, suggestions, uh, why we have this budget presenting and why. Like how we came about it and, and for the reason that we feel that it really is. And we thank the school board members for creating this committee, the committee, blah, and listening to our recommendations. That's a great way to get feedback from members of the community. And thank you to the school district staff who took time out to tour us around and, um. Attend meetings and, and share their struggles and things that they were willing to compromise on. And put all the information together that we kept asking for, uh, to help us better understand how things actually work and need to work in the district.
And then for all you task members that are here, there's Sonya, thank you for everyone, you guys put a lot of time into it and it was a big commitment for everybody, so. You know, thanks for everyone who's helped participate in that. And I think it was nice because we all really worked well together, everyone was very respectful of each other's ideas and opinions. And it's very nice to be on a committee like that and it was such a huge array of people. And then lastly, I wanna thank Scott and Kyle, Kyle's here today, from World Architects and Engineers for guiding us through this process. I don't know how you'd go about this if you didn't have them here to kind of show us through everything, so. They were very beneficial in showing us what we needed to look at and stuff, so you guys can add to. Any other questions?
I, I have a last question and I, and I honestly don't know how you'd go about answering, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. So, yeah, it's me, it's not Michelle. You started with a big, big list and a lot of ideas and you worked within your group and you knew where the, essentially the zero tax increase level was. Can you talk a little bit about how, how was the dynamic around the strength of needing to get that zero increase versus asking for, as you pointed out, a minimal increase in both? Was there, uh, did you get to consensus in your group, was there, was there?
I think when we, we first started, there was a, a larger number that really wanted that zero increase because obviously that's the safest. If we can do that, we know it can pass and we don't wanna risk it not passing. But we, as I, as we started going through the things and we realized what zero would get us, I don't know how we go backwards on this thing, but. It was basically deferred maintenance and some security and that's it. And nothing, nothing fun, you know, and, um, and nothing really benefiting. It's just like that maintenance stuff which is not, you know what I mean, that, you know, that. They're not saying, well, what is this doing for my students, yeah, maybe the security part, but it was, I don't even think that was, I think that was even over zero, wasn't it?
Yes.
Cause the maintenance alone was almost the whole zero, um, so.
Almost forty-nine.
Yeah, so I think then we realized, okay, we're gonna go over. So if we're gonna go over, what are things that we can put in here that we're most likely going to get people that, that they'll join in and they'll be on board with us? And so I think that as we went on and we started seeing that, and that's why we spent so much time debating. Like the community areas and the security areas and really getting that down to as minimal as we could. Cause our goal was to stay as close to zeros we could, but we realized we weren't gonna be able to do it. So what are the things we can put in here that will gain voter support? So, does that help?
Yeah, it does, actually it does.
Okay.
I, I would like to add to that. The discussion never came up in these exact terms, but I think the sense I got from everybody who was on this committee was that. We wanted to figure out if, if we're gonna ask the public for money, what are we gonna ask them for? We're gonna ask them for enough money to keep the school system and its facilities at the level of excellence that we expect from the school district that we all know. But not go above that to get into things that people might say, that's a little bit outlandish, why would you ask for that? So I think, I think that's, that's, we never said those exact words, but I think that's where we all were. We all realized that doing anything less than this, even though it's above zero. We would all kind of not be able to look at ourselves in the mirror and say, we did what we thought was right for the district.
You can probably have access to reports of all the things we cut out, so.
Yeah, that was a lot of millions.
And I think that's why, um, for the school board, this is a great process to go through because. As a school board when we meet, we were of the opinion, boy, we better not go above that zero impact. And for those people who are listening, the zero impact again is basically that the high school will be paid off for. And so we can take that money and reinvest it without increasing taxes locally. So then we go through this process with you as community members and now you're coming here today telling us, go above it, we believe you need to. And so that's why, um, it, it puts us in an interesting situation now. Because as a school board, we're sitting there initially in work session saying, should we go above that or shouldn't we? And now we've got a twenty-member task force from the community that, that reflects the community and is saying, yeah, we, we've taken careful consideration. But we're not asking you for wants, we're asking you for what we believe needs are. And so, uh, again, the process from that perspective was very well worth it and, um. Thank you to you three and thank you to members who took the time to come here tonight and, and show support as well. And also for those people that just couldn't get here, it was, uh, twenty individuals coming together and, and giving that support. Our next steps now as a, as a board are, we'll have heavy discussion on this at our next work session. We'll take into account your presentation, uh, your document that you provided us with. And we'll spend a lot of time, you know, now what do we wanna do, what are the next steps, um, that, the direction that we wanna go? The board knows one hundred percent in certainty that we need to do something, that we need to reinvest in our facilities. So we do know that we're gonna be going and asking for that reinvestment. Now it's just going to be what's going to be on the list and, and your dialogue and your interjections tonight definitely, um, helped us with that process. So thank you so much for your time, very much appreciated.
Well, and one thing that, that really sealed the deal for, for my understanding of it was the sharing of that, that no tax increase level. That forty-two million back when that bond was approved, the value of that has changed so much. That forty-two million today isn't the forty-two million dollar value that it was initially. And so adding a little bit to that, um, is actually just kind of just maintaining, it's not outlandish, it's not, we're not, you know. Putting in a carnival anywhere, it's, it's just making sure everything is safe and, you know, the best for the students that we have, so.
We just know there's never the budgets to do some of these other things we added in there either. And so this was a way that we could get that technology in there and make your spaces the, um, you know, safety, security, all that other stuff that. You just never have an opportunity to do any other time anymore.
Well, again, we.
No, Tim, come ahead, thank you.
Again, we, we thank you for your time and your commitment and if you wanna sit at a very exciting school board meeting for the rest of your evening, feel free. But we also are guessing that you probably will leave here because you've given us a lot of time, so. So thank you.
So I just had a minute or two to shake the three hands of the people that were, um, kind enough to give that presentation. But I wanna take time to say thank you to everybody that attended this meeting and that even more importantly, served on this committee. There is many other things that, that these people could have been choosing to do with their time and making their commitment in a respectful, giving way to the students of our district. It's just invaluable and we're gonna take it for the high value that it has as we go forward, um, towards a, a bond request here at the, at our next election. So, thank you to everybody. Uh, with that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Just wanna give you, uh, an update on Title One, I can't remember if I shared this with you. Title One, as Kim would say, the federal government tells us and sends us memos on what we may be receiving for this year. And what we might be receiving for, for next year. We've met with all of our Title One staff, uh, in elementaries as where Title One is typically administered and mainly reading and sometimes math. And with what we're seeing for our potential reductions in Title One, it could be upwards of around a hundred thousand dollars for next year. Now remember, the word is maybe. And so we don't wanna plan and say, well, they may be wrong. And so we are planning, um, for part of that reduction which will mean a few less days at each of our sites for pairs and one less pair at, at each of our sites. Which means we're gonna be over budget by above forty-seven thousand dollars if everything comes true even after we reduced. Uh, in our workshop session, I think I shared with you though that this is a direction that I'm recommending, it gives us some time to plan, uh, for beyond that. And I know that in our work session you as a board said, yes, um, give it some planning time. And who knows, in September, we may find out that it did not decrease by ten percent. But again, I know that his parents, uh, watch Hastings Cable Television and they know that, uh, next year they'll see some reduction in services for Title One. The part of the reason, or the, the main reason is the fact that we're getting reduction in funding from the federal government or, and/or it's projected. Now if we would find out next fall that it's not gonna be the ten percent reduction, then we can add back to the pair of time. We can add back days, we can add back pairs, so I just wanted to, uh, say that publicly because now the word, um, is getting out as we're, as we're starting to plan for next year. And it's getting out to our pairs, our teachers and through our principals, et cetera. The unpaid meal overview. Typically on the first reading of a policy, I will come to you and it will be close to finely tuned. This is one of the first times I'm coming to you with a first reading of a policy acknowledging that we still have a lot of work to do behind the scenes. And I'll be meeting with the policy committee members before we get there and then I'll be also then bouncing it off, uh, principals as well. Uh, but Kim Heron is our director of food services, has spent a lot of time on this. She's pulled other policies, uh, in the area and looked at them. Uh, she's also worked closely with Kim Frye on what do we need in the policy? And we do need this policy in place by July first, two thousand seventeen as it's a, uh, new expectation from the federal government to receive funding. And so for those people at home who maybe can't read it, what happens is that we have people that don't pay for their meals. And it can be, uh, an individual who lost their job in November, tough times and their meal account goes into the hole. And they never rebound from that and they never pay off what is owed. It can be an individual who both parents are working and they're working an hourly job, but they're just right above the free and reduced threshold, just barely. And they're trying to make payments, they're making payments of five bucks a week, but they just can't keep up and they go in the hole. And then four months later, they do qualify for free and reduced, well, the odds of us getting that money back from them aren't good because their financial situation hasn't changed. Some of it is from families who don't qualify for free and reduced, they're not close to qualifying. And they just go in the hole and they're, they just are not going to pay us. And so as we look at that amount and how much should a school, and then you know where the money comes from, if it does not get paid off, it comes from the general fund. Kim talked, Kim Heron talked to us about an angel account, you've maybe heard about that in the newspaper, the news media, some schools are going to an angel account. Where individuals and or businesses or organizations can donate to an angel account. And then somebody has to make a decision as to how would we use that to help pay for, for that situation. So there's just some really rough guidelines, I think the, the first page tells you some of the information. Uh, I don't know if there's the second page or.
That's all I have, it's one page.
So you go down to G then, and we can provide an alternative meal. And so you have the situation at your middle school where some students are going through a line where they're getting the regular meal. And then if they're, if we've cut them off so to speak and saying, we're not gonna let you go in the hole anymore. That student then would go to another line where they get an alternative meal which would be four slices of cheese on a bun, a fruit cup, some beans and a, and a milk. That alternative meal, Kim Heron did calculations, would roughly still cost us about twenty-seven cents a meal. So the question in the policy that we're gonna bring forth, uh, to our next work session, I'm gonna meet with the policy committee and Kim Heron following this meeting is. Will the school board at some point set a line in the sand and say, once you go this far in the hole, you will go to an alternative meal? And then will the school board say, after you've been on an alternative meal for two weeks or three weeks, then we're just, we're not going to feed you? And of course, all of this would have to be done with sensitivity and caring. We don't want a second grade student coming through the line and just pulling their meal and saying, you have to go to the alternative meal or just pulling their lunch and saying. You know, we're not going to feed you today. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of discussion and follow-up with parents, but quite honestly, we do have quite a bit of this discussion already with parents and letting them know. Warning them when their lunch count is low, telling them again that they're now in the red, trying to get them into work with it. What's been interesting is we've had parents who we know would qualify for the free and reduced meal and they will not fill out the application form. And I'll be quite, that's, you know, that's frustrating. Let's pretend that Dan and Joe, I know they're on tough times, they both lost their jobs, I know they would qualify and we go to them and they refuse to turn in, uh, the paperwork. So our policy committee is going to be, you know, talking about that and I know from a work session when we initially talked about this. Maybe two to three months ago, all of you as board members were like the same way I am and the same way principals are, oh man. Does it really have to come to this where we have to have a policy that says if you're not going to pay your meal, we're going to have to go a different direction? Kim also, uh, on her, uh, Kim Heron, on her angel account, she had some great ideas on, on how that could be used, what other. what other districts have done with it. But quite honestly, most other districts use it as a, a one-time help or clearing of the record, so to speak. And so then if the parent falls back in it, they just don't let those parents keep going to the angel account unless it's one heck of a reason. So let's say up at the high school, Mike Johnson knows that this family has hit really tough times and it dipped into, they've got three kids at the high school and it dipped into being seventy dollars in the red. Mike goes to the angel account, says, hey, this is a family, I know they're going to rebound and we take seventy dollars and we clear their record and then they start new. So then, so there's all these different parameters on how you can use the angel account too. And, and I know that we're, we're going to move, I know that I want to move towards setting up an angel account and seeing how it can work here because that's what some other districts are doing as well. So again, for the community, uh, by law, we have to have a policy and it, and we, and we should have a policy. We, we've had a practice that we've been doing for years and years. But quite honestly, and you could see by the earlier numbers, when you jump from being 10,000 in the red to then being 26,000 dollars in the red, we're in a situation where more and more parents are, are letting themselves go into the red. So who's on the policy committee again? So if you have strong feelings, Russ, Joe, Lisa and I will be meeting with Kim next week. Then we will bring it to you to the board work session in June for the final last tuning. And then we will, uh, approve it, uh, at our June meeting for July.
Kim, do you need us to get past the motion to discussion? Or you, you present the motion?
It may for the budget.
She goes through a quick recap.
You do a recap.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so this is like the best budget that's ever been presented. I'll tell you that to start with.
I know, it's already on their website, so that's something to worry about.
Well, and it's a good thing because I put it in, in our folder and it's not there. That happened to us one other time, so it's a good thing I put it on the website. Okay, so really what I'm going to, um, start going through is on page two and you guys should have all gotten a copy of this. Okay, so if you remember, and it was back in December, January, where you were, we did like a projection for this current year. And that projection showed that we would be 1.5 million, um, negative spending expenditures over revenue. And then there was also some scenarios, you know, if, um, the teacher's contract is settled at this, it would add this much more to it. The formula, we put a 1.5% increase. If it would have gone to a 2% increase, this is what would be added to revenue. So this budget is based off of what those projections were. So, um, the pupil count is still the 4,783.7, which that, we won't update that until October 1st, when all the kids are actually in the buildings. The good thing is our student numbers that were projected for this year, they're coming in almost spot on. So if these projections are good, then the next year's projections are hopefully still pretty good. So, um, 1.5.
Kim, not to be mean, but I hope your projection's off. I hope we really don't go down 73 students next year. I hope you're wildly wrong about that.
Right, but if we're going to be wrong, it's, it's going to be the other way.
That's what he's saying, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want it, I don't want it to go more than that.
I hope it's 15.
Okay. And that would be good. Okay, so for the, um, general ed formula, we put 1.5% into the formula. That has not been changed for this current budget. For the teacher's contract, I had moved everybody up one step and that's the same thing that I did in the projections. We just added anything to the salary schedule. That will be a change for the revised budget whenever they're settled. Health insurance is still at 4% in this budget, um, where we know it went to 2%. But the other thing that can affect that is we have open enrollment and you're going to have a number that change from single to family or from family to single. So it's still the same projection in this budget as what we have projected before. These things will change for the revised budget once we have that information. Okay, it's still the same number of FTEs that we had in the projected budget. Um, the one thing that did change from the projected budget is, um, updated the transportation amounts. We've got now what the new transportation contract will be. Um, district-wide supply budgets were increased by 17,000. Most of this goes back to technology systems. 30,000 was added because this is an election year, so there will be election costs. And then for the GASB, this is the OPEC pension accumulated sick leave. At the same time that we talked about the projections last December, remember the Hildy, from Hildy Corporation came in and a decision was made, you know, of, of where that budgeted amount was going to be. So the, this budget has been updated with that. So now I'm going to go to page three. So if you look at the yellow line, when we did the projections, at that point we had, and it's this number right over here. So we had the, we would be overspending by 1.5 million dollars in that, those projections. But then I also gave you two, two line scenarios that if teacher's contract went up by this amount, you would add this. And if it went up by this amount, you would have to add that. So this is where, this is, this is the best we know at this time. We have to pass an adopted budget to keep operating July 1st. So this is our starting point for this next school year. So now if I go back a page, it's not going to let me. Okay, so if you look down at the bottom of this, these are the things that have not been done yet for this budget. Okay, so the board had approved to, um, reduce 4.0 FTEs, which was approximately 500,000. So that will be done in the revised budget. So if you start by looking at the 2 million, okay, so then you're going to reduce it by 500,000. Okay, um, the percentage of the teacher's salary isn't in this budget yet. So if the projections, it was if you increase the salary schedule by 1%, it's going to cost 267,000, so then you would add that back to this budget. If you increase by 2%, it's going to add 484,000. So you reduce by 5,000, you're going to, or 500, then you're going to have to add back. Right now, what has come through for the state is that, that it looks like it is going to settle at 2% for the formula. So if it does end up settling at 2%, then you would add 143,511 in revenue back to this 2,000. So you subtract 500, you add anywhere from 267 to 484. And then you add revenue of 143,511. The TRA increase right now is, is off the table in the legislation, which is good for this budget, but at some point in time, it's going to.
That for my retirement.
Right, it's deteriorating the pension fund at some point, somebody, right. Okay, so then, um, so those were, those are the major things that, that changes are going to be made. And then once this budget was completed, we finally got our final special ed aid back from the state for 1516. And we're all, already almost done with 1617. I know, so what we actually booked for special ed aid in 1516, we actually got 55,000 more than what we bought, so that's good. We don't want to get less than what we bought.
But it's not dramatically more.
No, but once you get the final 1516, then you can update what your 1617 special ed is going to be. So our 1617 special ed is going to come in. And this is, that, this is still estimate because it's not final till your year is final and we do our audit. But that's going to come in about 100,000 over what we budgeted. Once 1617 is done, it's going to give you better numbers than to predict your 1718. And so right now, what we've looked at is that could be anywhere from 200 to 400. But it's really, it's really.
It's really squishy right now.
Right, because I met with the, this Paul Farron, he's the special ed state guru on special ed. And so I plugged in all my numbers and then I said to him, I said, do you guys really have this money? You know, if we're going to get this increase and all districts are going to, and he said, yes. But then if I look at the runs that were done for the governor's budget, they're less than what my new numbers are showing. And we have a meeting at the end of June at 9:17 for all the member districts. And it's that Paul Farron again that's going to be there. So I'm going to bring my stuff and I'm going to say, is this number going to be this percent? And then, well, for the revised budget, we will have a better projected number, but I can't really tell you what it is. So when it's all said and done and you kind of throw all these numbers back and forth, it's kind of looking like we will, the revised budget will end up at 1.2 to 1.5 negative million. It's, it should not.
It's still in the neighborhood of what we expected, but.
Right, and it should not go over the negative 2 million, which.
Is what we're adopting.
Right. So that's really the best.
I, I just think one of the things that's.
No, I, I would appreciate.
One thing that's frustrating for me, I see the tremendous amount of time that Kim puts in to this contacting Paul Farron at MDE, the guru, and he's really good. And then running all of our numbers and she's pulling all these sheets of information and doing all these calculations and then confirming with him. And then today to see runs from the state where that's not what they're going to fund it at.
Well, it, it's not that that's not where they're going to fund it at.
Not have the money.
It's that the estimates given to the state, but then you have to think, those estimates were given to the state way back in January before the 1516 special ed aid was finalized. So it's like everything's behind in numbers.
There again.
So at that.
You're confirming my frustration.
Okay.
You confirm.
Well, I just don't want it to be on the, that we're saying they're wrong, that's not what I'm saying.
I don't think Paul's watching this, but, um, and I think he's really good at what he does.
Right.
But, and I think he knows the formula very well. But then after all that work, the game changes, the rules change a little bit.
But I do believe we'll have an increase in special ed aid for the 1718 budget than what we have currently budgeted. But it's just.
A moving target.
What is the spread of that increase?
Thank you, Kim.
Yep.
Are there any additional questions for Kim whilst up at the podium? We can certainly have more discussion after the motion. Thanks so much.
Yep.
And unless you board members want to go into special session from midnight till 6:00 in the morning, we do need to get this approved first so we can move forward in July.
Sure, we'd have more to show for it, but it.
We would, we would. Yes, you're right.
Some people. All right, so given that, um, positive note, could I get a motion in a second to approve the 2017, 2018 adopted budget?
A motion, second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. An equally, actually not even equally, a much less exciting motion to approve the accounting and financial procedures manual, which I'm sure everybody's studied in great detail.
I got to page two.
Could I get a motion in a second?
Make a motion. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I, again, thank you, Kim. Tremendous amount of work that goes into putting that together and making sure that Hastings does meet the requirements as outlined by, in this case, the federal government's requiring this, so thank you.
So, so for us new board, newer board members, is this brand new or is this just a revised one you've been working on?
No, this is, this is brand new. We've always had to follow the federal government CFRs for federal grants. But it's new that requires you to have this manual in place. And if you don't have it in place and you get audited, they could potentially not give you your federal dollars. So it's kind of to, but you've jived through.
It's well done.
All right, thank you. Given that we have a motion in a second, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We have a motion to approve some insurance rates for 2017, 2018. And I'm going to just take this, uh, take a second to point out that I know people watching on TV are thinking, oh, I can't read the motion, I don't, I don't see what these insurance rates are. Our agendas are always posted on the district webpage. You go under School Board, School Board on the left, Meeting Agendas on the right, and then there it'll be. So you can always pull it up, um, study in detail the insurance rates, uh, the names of the people retiring, the names of the people being employed, rather than us reading them out at meetings. It's all available, um, even prior to the meeting, so, a little plug for our webpage there. So, a motion to approve insurance rates on property and liability, workers' compensation and agency fee. Could I get a motion in a second?
Make the motion. Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve the second reading of three policies. 305 Policy Implementation, the policy saying we should have policies, Dan's favorite. 428 Ethical Behavior and 429 Code of Conflict. Yet again, our policies are on our district webpage. School Board, Board Policies. Recognize there's multiple pages because I always forget we have policies after number 200 because they're on following pages, but those two are on our website.
And if my memory serves me right, Kim, these three were required in that manual.
Right.
So we, um.
Part of adopting.
Yeah, that was the reason why we presented them at our last board meeting and they're, and they're part of what we already adopted. So I hope you approve them.
I think two of the three are excellent.
We're putting them in a package here, we're just going to have to take it or leave it.
I know, just like a lot of, a lot of times you, you know, vote for the whole and you don't take it apart.
Yeah, exactly.
Do we need a motion to waive the reading of these?
Is that a yes or a not?
I think yes.
So I move that we waive the reading of these three policies.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, thank you for waiving the readings. Our next motion is to approve the school breakfast, lunch, milk prices for the 2017, 2018 school year.
Just going to share a little bit of, uh, background for the community and for board members. I need to correct a statement that I said to some of you in a side conversation. A, and Kim will correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, started about three or four years ago where the federal government said that if we're going to give you a subsidy of this much for meals, we don't want you as a school district then charging less than the subsidy that we're giving you. And so if it's less than that, we want you to keep working towards what we're giving as a subsidy at a 10 cents increase per, per meal. So every year for the last four years in a row, we've increased our subsidy by 10 cents. The clarifying comment that I want to share is that I said, uh, to some of you at a work session or at a side meeting in the parking lot, I can't remember where, that at some point, we might be like some other school districts where if we have to keep increasing it, we'd have to look, is it? if we have to keep increasing it, we'd have to look, is it really worth our, our time and our money for what we're getting out of the federal program? Uh, I went back and shared that with Kim, and she corrected me and said that the schools that have done that have maybe only done it at a certain site where they don't have many free and reduced programs, so let's say Menetownka High School or, um, Edina Mental School, they made, they made the choice to not do it there, so would Hastings ever get to that point where we probably wouldn't be able to rely on the free and reduced revenue, um, as well? Probably not, so I just wanted to make sure that I don't remember who I shared some of those comments with, so again, we're following protocol by the federal government, and we are following their guidelines of increasing our meals by ten cents for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify that we're increasing the lunches by a dime, the breakfast prices are not increasing going into the twenty seventeen, eighteen school year. Could I get a motion in a second? On this action?
Make a motion, I'll second.
Thank you, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say that, um, so people know they're watching, you know, lunches start at two dollars and sixty cents, or yet, well, I guess it'll be at two seventy after a time increase. And, uh, they max out at the high school, that for students at three bucks, so that's a pretty darn good deal, so.
And they're complete meals.
Yeah.
You might be able to buy a Lunchable, and provide that to your kid, but, but this is a complete meal.
No, I, and I think they're good, you know, so, uh, when we go over to the high school, I'm always pretty pleased. So that makes the earlier discussion kind of aggravated, you know, when we have twenty-six thousand unpaid. But, there's my editorial for the night.
Thank you, any additional conversation? All right, hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Lisa, before we go on, going back to the, to the second reading of the following policies, the motion I think was to waive the reading, I don't know that we, do we need a, to then move to approve?
To approve?
I just said- We do, I was assuming you were, I was assuming you were doing it all in one motion to-
Fair enough, I just want to make sure that, that we're covered.
Was that a commonly held assumption, that it was waive the reading and approve?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, I see a lot of head nodding, okay, that's exactly what we meant. Moving forward to motion item six. Motion to approve the employee classification review cycle for pay equity compliance for twenty seventeen, eighteen. Could I get a motion in a second?
A motion, second.
Thank you, any discussion? This is an ongoing item, we just review a set number of the, of the job classifications on a, on a regular basis. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have a motion to approve the acceptance of a gift from Apple, all capital, for an estimated amount of eight hundred and eight dollars for the Apple Distinguished Educator Conference. Could I get a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
This ties into-
The next motion.
Yeah, and so I'll just talk about it right now, and then we can just eventually approve both, and that's going through the process of us as a board, um, when it ties into the gift law, conferences, et cetera, knowing who's attending, what the cost is, and then that we're in favor, uh, and definitely both, both action items are on here because we're in favor of it as a district, and hats off to Andy Lizer for being recognized um, as an Apple Distinguished Educator.
We can hardly wait to see when he comes back, I'm sure it'll be something fantastic.
It will be something fantastic.
Where is the conference?
I think it's in Houston. I know it's out of state.
Not at the Apple headquarters.
All right, we have a motion and second, correct, Yana? All right, thank you. With that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And then our next motion is to approve Andy Lizer to attend the Apple Distinguished Educator Conference on behalf of our school district, could I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve the resignation of a number of individuals.
Can I remove Ray's name before we even-
Yeah, there was some confusion on that, um, he's really not, um, resigning. Technically, we had two contracts going on with him, and so he had to resign from the one so that we could, but yeah, we had other people email the end of the day saying-
Okay, yeah, scared me, I saw that, so, good.
Could I get a motion in a second?
Sure, I'll make the motion, second.
Thank you, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have a motion to approve the termination slash non-renewal of, uh, following certified employees due to program reductions and or restructuring. Could I get a motion in a second?
A motion, second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Again, it, it ties into, um, ABE being over budget for the second year, so the first two, it's, it's a tightening of that budget, and they still will be over budget a little bit, even with that for two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And then, as our title one, as we've had to have less pairs as well, um.
Now, if the, if the numbers from our earlier discussion come back different, it'd just be possibly then when they head back.
Right, we either head back in hours, days, or people, um, yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We then have a motion to approve the employment of five individuals. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. There is a listing then of some other business, upcoming meetings, our work session, did you want to jump into?
No, yep, go ahead, I just want to make sure, um, we didn't have it on the agenda, and I didn't catch it right away at the beginning, but we just had our first teacher negotiations meeting, and I would like to, to close the meeting just for five to ten minutes, just to update, um, the rest of board members, the discussion that we had.
Okay, so prior to adjournment, we'll have a motion to close?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have an upcoming work session, do you anticipate that will be here?
Yes, I do, yep, it'll be here.
Okay, perfect, thank you, middle school graduation? Cumberly, or far, far away from the building? Is that Thursday morning, is it Friday evening, high school graduation, there'll be more details about where to meet and exact times on that, as it gets closer, and then we follow up with a regular board meeting on the twenty-first. We are having an Excel breakfast at the high school, I suspect each, each of you responded to sue yes or no, depending on your individual availability, and that's tomorrow morning. Is anybody aware of any other business that, that may have been overlooked on this agenda, or on this list?
When we're in the closed session, I'll just try to confirm with you three, we'll pull out our calendars for when we can meet next week, maybe with Kim Heron.
Okay.
And or the fol, or, and or early the following week.
Sure.
How long do we need to close?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries, we're going to close session.
Right next door here.
Yeah, let's go next door.